Okay, thank you, Speaker. That concludes public comment for today. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on the following items. Let's go ahead and vote on Items 1 through 3, Item 23, Items 25 through 33, and Items 35 through 48. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
I know that we've signed an agreement with the county, and members of this council have been working really hard to make sure that we are identifying sites for the 6,700 beds that we committed under the Alliance case. We've identified sites for these beds, and I know that some of us are still continuing to try to look for additional sites as well, but we have to continue on this path. With the approval of Item 16 this morning, we've also added more sites and another 800 beds on top of the 6,700 beds that we committed to, for a total of 7,500 beds. To reach that goal, we've had to acquire 15 sites through Project Home Key using COVID relief money, and I know you've been very instrumental in identifying some of these sites, and we're also trying to buy five additional sites outside of Home Key. So we're going to continue to discuss this issue, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows you need to keep in mind that we are towards, we're working towards an actual decision at some point. So I want to be able to figure out what the best way moving forward is. So this is what we're here to do. We're going to go ahead and allow about an hour or so for discussion. So, Members, if you have any questions, if I can have Meg come to the, um, Meg? So, um, let's go ahead and start with Mr. Blumenfield.
Great. Look, I know we're not going to vote on changing or narrowing 4118 today. My hope is this is going to give us the time and space to clearly spell out humane protocols and get more people on the same page, and that's, that's great. The proposed ordinance, I wanted to just upfront say, was never meant to be a solution to homelessness, and it certainly was not meant to make homelessness unlawful. I know that many of the most vociferous critics continue to repeat that the ordinance is the wrong solution to homelessness. The ironic thing is, I totally agree with them, in that creating buffer zones around freeways and shelters is not an answer to homelessness. I agree that the solution is housing and shelter. I also agree with the providers and advocates that being homeless is not a crime, and then if the ordinance is only meant to restrict people, it's not appropriate. In addition, if we have to dislocate people from where they're encamped, we have an obligation to make sure they have appropriate shelter. However, the ordinance was not meant to cure homelessness. It was meant to help the city enable shelters to be placed and accepted throughout the city. It was meant to allow us to keep critical freeway corridors that are choke points for communities safely passable and free of encampments, but only after everyone who had been in those encampments was offered housing and council passed a resolution verifying that this had happened and they were offered housing. It was meant and is meant to strike a healthy balance between the needs of people experiencing homelessness and the people living with encampments in their neighborhoods. A balance that would ultimately create more collaboration and a greater willingness to invest in local shelters and housing for the unhoused. It was meant to allow us to comply with the federal judge's decree that the freeways are not safe, and Judge Carter has said that we're the only city he's worked with that doesn't have such an ordinance on the books, and that having some way to regulate where encampments are allowed is necessary for achieving the type of settlement agreements other cities have achieved. So it's folly to think that settling the case, as we all hope will happen and will succeed, that if we cannot also, that we're not going to be able to settle this if we cannot also have something on our books that allows for regulation of where encampments can and cannot be. We, as a city, should be able to regulate encampments without criminalizing them. If we cannot regulate them, we do a disservice to the people who live within them, and we do a disservice to the people who live in the community surrounding them. As you know, with LSA and LA Family Housing, we implemented a successful pilot program in my district where we offered housing to everyone who resides in the freeway underpass, in all of my freeway underpasses, and it worked, not just because we had intensive outreach, but because we had a choice date when folks knew that the area where they had been encamped would no longer be available to do so. This is what Judge Carter calls a "choice date." We believed we would be able to humanely enforce this choice date, and no police were involved, everyone was offered shelter. It was the exact same process Mr. Bonin used at the Penmark Golf Club. As he said to the judge, he said, quote, "The fact that there was Public Works Project coming did incentivize people to make a choice. Both of us were able to house about the same number of people." The difference between our projects and the same groups who are helping us do it was that after they offered everyone housing, they were able to remove the remaining bulky items and put up a fence that spans four blocks. I was not able to remove bulky items that were not specifically identified by someone who had been homeless, and we could not put up a fence, because they were relocating people because of a Public Works project, whereas we were relocating people because of the Judge Carter case and because the sidewalks are critical corridors connecting the residential area to schools and essential services on Ventura Boulevard. Consequently, abandoned property still litters my underpasses, and a few people are starting to set up camps again in the underpasses. Two of the people who've come back whom I've spoken with are still enjoying their Project Room Key hotels several nights a week, but they also like to spend a few nights in the underpasses. That fact should be disturbing to anyone who wants to see people actually sheltered and housed. If we cannot come up with a humane way to keep these critical corridor underpasses free from encampments by April, Judge Carter has threatened to take matters into his own hands. I don't take his statements lightly, and while the MOU vacated his direct order about clearing the underpasses, um, that's still his direction, and if we cannot find a way to humanely create a buffer zone around new shelters like cabin communities, we also risk having fewer of these cabin communities, and we potentially make these shelters less successful for the residents within them. As you may know, and as noted in Item 16, I'm in the process of standing up two cabin communities right now in my district. Just like the Bridge Home that's opening in January in my district, these shelter options face substantial opposition. Just yesterday, Channel 2 CBS had a story about several dozen neighbors gathering behind my office, expressing their grave concerns about the cabin community, and they noted, many of them live literally right across the street in the townhouse from where this cabin community is. They are understandably concerned about the fact that we're bringing in 100 formerly homeless new neighbors 100 feet away from us. Similarly, the preschool that is catty-cornered to the other cabin community is very concerned about the impact that that's going to have on them. I can and will and do tell these folks that their new neighbors are people who are in need of shelter and that we all have to do our part. It's not an easy conversation, and I know it doesn't make people happy and it doesn't allay their fears, but I also tell them that we, as a city, will do everything we can to ensure that we help minimize the impact on the neighborhoods and that we'll make sure that the locations are kept clear. I want the new neighbors and the current neighbors to get along. We all want that. However, if these cabin communities become magnets for encampments, as we've seen happening in several of the Bridge Homes, then not only will we have brought in new formerly homeless residents into the area that are living in cabins and receiving services, but we'll also have brought in encampments into an area that didn't have them before. Doing so isn't right, and it isn't fair, and from a strictly practical perspective, if we cannot properly maintain the areas around these cabin communities, it will be increasingly difficult and eventually impossible to get other communities to accept such, such new communities. And if our goal is to have shelters in every corner of this city, which I know is a goal that a lot of us share, it's not going to happen. It's only going to happen if we can assure folks that the shelter does not come with added encampments, that it is a shelter that houses people. So getting more shelter is directly linked to being able to have some modest ability to determine where encampments can be prohibited. At the end of the day, we need more shelter, we need more housing, we need permanent supportive housing, social housing, rapid rehousing, congregate housing, and I do believe that the district-specific global settlement that Judge Carter was talking about will help us get there, but like every city that has reached such an agreement, we have to have some ability to humanely regulate where encampments can and cannot go. And I look forward to working with all the members of this body and all the public stakeholders on finding a humane way to do this, so that it's very clear that we're housing folks, we're not criminalizing folks, but we are allowing for basic regulation. Thank you.
And thank you, and Mr. Blumenfield, for your remarks, and Madam President, thank you for highlighting Item 16, the considerable approvals we made just today as a council that went through my committee last week, and for really underscoring the fact that we are on our way. We also have several Bridge Home sites, as you and Mr. Bon, and Mr. Blumenfield spoke of, that are open with over two dozen in the works, some of which we approved today, safe parking sites existing with more projects in the pipeline, Home Key property acquisitions, cabin communities funded and on the drawing horns, and other permanent supportive housing projects not in these categories funded through traditional sources. For everyone listening, we're working on, we are negotiating and signing ground leases as we speak for more of those cabin communities. Additionally, we're investing hundreds of millions of dollars through our homeless recovery roadmap interventions. However, we are just now at the early stages of standing up these actual indoor spaces for people to occupy, both within the category of the Judge Carter requirement and otherwise. Today, this moment, is not the time to adopt hastily drafted ordinances that have not taken into account all of the variables structurally and environmentally at this time. As I've said before, some level of enforcement eventually will be necessary once we have the inventory, and I know there are people who do not want to hear that. Furthermore, the enforcement we eventually adopt can and should be unarmed, and it should involve those teams that really work hard to help people get into shelter and wellness, but we're not there yet.
Discussion to be had about whether or not enforcement is necessary if the inventory is there. That may be the case, that that discussion needs to be had, but the inventory is not there yet. It's a purely academic discussion at this point that has no bearing on the street reality in Los Angeles. For all of the work that nearly every member of this council has done to provide more resources, to build more housing, to open safe parking, to plan for tiny home villages or cabin villages, for all of them, they are still so far from, from the desperate need that is out there on the streets that the question really doesn't apply to the reality we have on the streets right now. Tomorrow, we're going to be hearing an item about trying to find ways to more quickly house people who become newly homeless. It's an item that we had in homelessness and poverty last week, and as part of that report from LSA, LSA says that the system is challenged by a measurable gap in resources available to house all persons in need. Even calculating everything that is in the pipeline, they would need another 5,311 rapid rehousing slots and another 12,000 additional units of supportive housing. That's outside of the current pipeline, outside of the current pipeline, and there's so much about the proposal that is, is even premature for, I think, for a council discussion, because it presupposes a couple things which, which are not true. The first that it presupposes is that there is a way to do what the ordinance, the draft ordinance outlines. The fact is, we do not have sufficient resources available for everybody who would need to be offered housing. Two, we do not have a technology or a tracking system at this point where in real time someone who is doing outreach can identify that there is an available bed for someone to use that night. That system does not exist yet. Three, we have not yet had the discussion of what does an offer of shelter actually mean? Is it enough for someone to actually make an offer? Is that our goal? Or is our goal to actually get somebody placed into housing? Are we going to go out and say, oh, well, you know, there's a place, you know, all the way across town, if you can get your butt there, then you're good? Or are we actually going to find a way to transport somebody there? Are we going to make sure that they actually get admitted? Are we going to make sure that it's actually the proper placement that helps them get housed and on a path to getting off the street long-term? We have had a lot of discussions in this council over the past six months about reimagining public safety and moving, moving LAPD out of an enforcement posture. Who's going to be making the, the offer of shelter in exchange for this enforcement, for, for putting this threat over somebody's head that there will be consequences? Is that going to be a LSA outreach worker? That threat of enforcement from an outreach worker imperils the relationship that they are trying to build with somebody who is unhoused, to get them into the system and get them housed. If it's a police officer we're talking about or a law enforcement authority, we're taking several big steps back from what we have been speaking about over the past several months, about what we want to be doing with reimagining public safety in Los Angeles and moving law enforcement out of the homelessness business. The other thing that this discussion, I think, presupposes is that it certainly leaves the impression that some people think that our biggest problem with housing people is that people are service resistant, and they're just not willing to accept the help that is being offered them. I would, I would challenge that in two ways. One, I would argue that the vast majority of people who are unhoused do not meet even what I think is an inaccurate term of service resistance. The vast majority of people out there want placements. LSA has lists of people who want to get in places that we have not been able to accommodate people for, and, um, uh, we also, um, often do not offer people the right services. I was talking with a gentleman just the other day who had been stabbed and was having health issues and was, needed to convalesce, and he was placed in a shelter that required him to walk several times a week on his walker, a mile and a half distance to get to the ongoing medical care he needed to have. We need to be making sure that we're offering people the right resources. It's often the case that, that, that the, the small number of people who say no to the services being offered are because the services, services being offered are not appropriate and are not suitable to them. Final point is, if we want to get to an agreement, and I've heard people say, oh, we're just trying to do what, what Judge Carter did in Orange County, we can't do that ourselves. We do not have the ability to bring all sides together in the city of Los Angeles. What Judge Carter did in Orange County was come to an agreement with everybody, so that the Carol Sobles were at the table, the Shayla Myers were at the table, the ACLU was at the table, the people who are calling in and telling this council we are taking the wrong approach, they were part of an agreement, and if we really want to, to move forward with anything sane and reasonable, I think that we need to be entering into a master agreement, not a district-by-district agreement where we push homelessness from district to district, but a master agreement with the judge and with all parties. So that's what I would ask that we do, and I would just ask City Attorney, as I close, you have responded with a lot of energy and alacrity to the motion that went in with a draft ordinance, with a memo, with points back, talking about how it could move forward. I would suggest that we shouldn't be moving forward until we've resolved all the issues in your memo, but since you have moved forward with such energy and speed with the motion, I would ask that you do so as well with the substitute motion, which is also part of the council file, and you come back with a report for us for our future consideration about what it would take, whose authority needs to be invoked, the councils or the mayors, in order to begin to commandeer hotels in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thoughts that we've sort of been shoehorned into is a bad strategy. We're, we're responding to the judge's response to a lawsuit, and his response is clear the area near freeways. This would drive a certain amount of requirement to move people. Some will accept shelter, others won't, and in a pandemic, moving people from encampments to other encampments is the worst possible strategy. We've been somewhat fortunate that we haven't had a lot of spread in encampments, and I think it's because we haven't been breaking them up and forcing people into several different encampments every time we do that. I also, as, as Mr. Bonin has expressed, am not a fan of the judge's approach, which is leaving 15 districts each trying to resolve the problem in silos rather than having the city solve it as a unit. It's been particularly difficult in my district because we can't seem to find any appropriate properties, and the ones that we flagged for the city, the city itself has rejected because they feel that they're too small in acreage and not efficient, but if we're going to approach this as 15, we can't keep working against ourselves. I don't think there's anyone that wanted this, either on the council or at the county or among the advocates, including those who have generated the legal actions in the first place, and I think that's the most pressing need for enforcement, is the people that don't take it near freeways. Also, I think there's a false impression by many that if the council just had the will, homelessness would be solved. I, I think that is wildly simplistic and wrong. There aren't enough locations, we don't have enough funding, we don't have the ability to make it happen instantaneously. It would be virtually impossible for us to, in any kind of expeditious way, house 40,000 people, plus the many more that we might expect after the COVID emergency ends. But I'm sure we could do better, and we have been making progress, as Mr. O'Farrell outlined, but it has just become such a massive problem that it's almost impossible for me to envision how we house every single person that's out there and the thousands more that will, are expected to occur once evictions are again allowed. Now, again, I think it's bad to move anyone under, under the era of COVID, so I think it's bad to do it relating to freeways and the judge. I think it's a bad idea to move people any distance to clear the sidewalks, although the idea of actually moving encampments that happen to be near bridge housing, I think under COVID is a disastrous idea. Whether we'd want to keep an area clear when it is clear in a bridge housing unit section or, or entity goes through is a possibility. Not necessarily a fan, but I'm really not a fan of moving existing encampments that happen to be near bridge housing. During COVID, the way it is now, it's just one more opportunity for spread, and I think any opportunity for spread is a mistake. I think we need to focus more on family reunification, which Mr. Bonin touched on and I've been talking about for years, as our top priority, identifying people that are willing to live with their family, identifying family members that are willing to take them in, which might not always be the most obvious family member. I think also, we, we, as Mr. Bonin said, as a number-one priority, we need a bed tracking system, because we have, have beds that go unused all over the city, because we don't know exactly where they are and where the placement is. And I think that's all I have to say. A lot, a lot of thoughts, but not a fan of going as far in terms of what our proposed ordinance would do in terms of forcing people to move. I think that, under COVID, is generally a bad strategy.
There are difficult decisions that need to be made in order to restore and, and improve upon the quality of life for residents, many of whom opted in support of providing all these additional resources with respect to H and HHH, and in communities like mine, who stepped up to the plate and didn't say we couldn't find the locations, didn't say, oh, it's not available, not only are we disproportionately constructing the number of affordable housing units to assure that families don't fall into homelessness, but we are also constructing and fulfilling the units that will provide for those that desperately need either bridge or interim or emergency or permanent supportive housing. And so we need to start making some, some headway here, and we have to identify where the common ground lies to make sure that when we go through the task of, of identifying the right alignment of individuals to be housed, that we can then protect those public spaces for the community to enjoy.
And I need to show my community that these housing sites are helping people get off the streets, and so what, you know, these ordinances that we're, that we're talking about today do exactly that. So I need to show them that they are, they're helping clean up, you know, that area, that's their major concern, because, you know, I know my community wants to help, but I also understand their concerns when, you know, one is being built near them. So not only am I showing that community, hey, this is going to be cleaned up, we're able to enforce these ordinances, and what we're trying to promise them, and some of our colleagues, in trying to help them build these projects, because they're talking to their community and saying to them, if you, if you support this project going there, then we will make sure that there is an area created as a sort of, lack of a better term, a type of buffer zone around that project, to show those people that it is a balance right now of what, how we're trying to address this crisis. But why it's extremely important for, for, for me is, I have these three projects going up. I'm going to have the rest of my communities looking at these three projects, and if these three projects have, you know, you know, there are tents on the streets around them and it actually creates a worse situation that was there, you know, created a worse situation now than there was before, they're going to look at it and say, there's no way I'm going to support, you know, a project in my district. But if, but if we do keep the sites clean, if, if their area around it is, I think that if they notice a difference and that we're truly helping people get off the streets, they're going to actually come to me with potential sites where we can build more housing in the future. You know, Councilman, you know, Bonin, you know, makes a statement that, that we don't have the stock, so why, why even have this debate? But that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to create more stock. We're trying to strike that balance, and, you know, when he says that, you know, many people in, in our community say, you know, that there are some in that housed community that don't want the help, and Councilman Bonin says he disagrees. Well, those people in my community that question, you know, why are we building? Because these people won't accept the services. We can show them they are wrong, that if the rooms fill up, and if what Councilman Bonin says is true, that the rooms will fill up, you know, there are less people out there that will turn down these services, then we have nothing to worry about. The only time we enforce this ordinance is if we have the rooms that, you know, that we offer rooms that are still available and they turn them down, which I honestly don't think it's going to be the case, but it's something that we can offer them to show them that if their concerns are true, it's our, our way of saying that if your concerns are true, then we will enforce.
Too many of the residents in our district have worked too hard for too many years to be able to afford a better quality of life for their families, only to look out their windows today and see the impacts of decisions that they didn't make. So I think kudos to you, Madam President, as well as the other council members. I just heard, you know, from Councilmember Monica Rodriguez, and she made some very excellent points that, that I very much agree with.
Although I stood opposed to the enforcement action that we tabled in October, I want to make sure that I'm clear on how deeply I appreciate and understand the need to clean our streets and protect all of our community members. Too many of the residents in our district have worked too hard for too many years to be able to afford a better quality of life for their families, only to look out their windows today and see the impacts of decisions that they didn't make. So I think kudos to you, Madam President, as well as the other council members. I just heard, you know, from Councilmember Monica Rodriguez, and she made some very excellent points that, that I excellent points that I very much agree with. Listen, our constituents, our electorate have voted time and time again, reaching into their pockets only to see little in a way of real tangible results. And this is the new reality for so many new homeowners as well as even renters across our city, and this across our city, quite frankly, is unconscionable. However, I do not think I'm alone on this council in believing that we simply cannot paint over the cracks by addressing the way this crisis looks instead of changing our response to crisis with the urgency that it demands. Now, homelessness inflicts enormous costs, as we all know, on our healthcare system, our public safety resources, and with the crisis spreading throughout the city, it's jeopardizing, as we know, our businesses as well as our economy. And a lot of council members, in fact, every single one, has been working overtime in our respective districts to address it. But right, and right now, we have an impressive tapestry of creative ideas quilted together by our offices and by advocates on the ground to bring people indoors, whether it be pallet shelters, whether it be underutilized hotel spaces, et cetera. But what we don't have as of yet right now, and I'm sure there is room for interpretation or debate, is what we don't have is a coordinated strategy, no roadmap. It feels like what's missing in our approach to solving this crisis is a clearly defined goal, a North Star, if you will, and a coordinated plan to accomplish that goal with urgency and accountability. At all costs, we must avoid receivership, a receivership situation, where the federal courts starts making decisions for us. But without a North Star, a guiding objective, that's exactly where we're headed. Clearly, the class act lawsuits, I think it's the L.A. Alliance versus the City of L.A., are not just about the homeless under our freeway underpasses and overpasses, but about an unhoused community forced to take shelter in more and more neighborhoods. So receivership would strip us of local control, our ability to set budget priorities, local planning decision-making, and essentially reduce us all to powerless figureheads, incapable of truly serving the people who have elected us to represent them. Yes, we need a plan to enforce our public safety laws, without question, to clean our streets, without a doubt, but our first step must be to come together and establish a comprehensive citywide plan. What we need is to establish that North Star, so we have a comprehensive guiding plan to deal with the 41,000 individuals who are sleeping on our streets today. Now, with the potential settlement, if there is going to be one, and who knows if there will be one, with Judge David Carter, with the City of L.A. and L.A. Alliance, if we do, you know, our jobs, and I have every confidence that we will do it, you know, by spring of next year, 2021, we'll have 6,700 people under a roof. There's things that are beyond our control with regards to mental health issues as well as inflation greatly outpacing stagnant wages, salaries. Those are big macro issues. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we can piecemeal our way, we can walk, you know, limp along and meander, or we have to establish that North Star so we can have that comprehensive plan where we can all join forces together and meet that goal for the City of L.A., for the people of L.A. So, you know, Madam President, I thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to share a few words.
Can I just say to the members of council and public, there may comment that I share your hope and your frustration. Our inability to clean the streets, clean up the streets after we were able to remove our homeless neighbors has just been totally frustrating, you know. We'd be able to move, for example, 100 or so individuals off the streets, but without the ability to really clean up the area afterwards, you know, the encampments still are available. Individuals sometimes will come to the bridge housing during the day, during the evening and during the day they're, you know, they're at the encampment. And it's just a frustrating situation that doesn't provide any help at all.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. I think we all agree that our approach to homelessness must be a housing-first approach. I know that. I know we all agree on that. In my district, let me remind the city that I'm bringing online pallet shelters, permanent supportive housing units, a bridge home, rapid rehousing, Project Room Key, California Home Key, and we're proud to have the First Navigation Center outside of Skid Row and much more. Our neighboring cities, all of which have ordinances in place, that truly do make it a crime to be homeless by prohibiting camping, property storage, vehicle dwelling, or RV parking across every square inch within their respective city limits. Can you please share that slide? Take a look at this, members. The failure of our neighboring cities to build housing, with the exception, I would say, Redondo Beach, who's building 25 pallet units, Alhambra, building 40 permanent supportive housing units, Gardena, now considering a pallet shelter, so thank you very much.
Mute. Madam Chair and colleagues, thank you for this conversation. Let me, first of all, thank you, Madam Chair, for permitting this opportunity for us to discuss this. It is a conversation that is timely. It's a conversation that must be had. It's a conversation that gives us an ability to pull our resources together so that we could address this problem that has been well described by everybody. I have a, I have a, I think, let me offer as a response to those clamoring for a citywide solution to this problem. And let me just say, with all due respect, that I think the citywide solution, the North Star, the plan, is simply can be encapsulated in one word: built. We heard all morning from the caller-in community talking about, we need housing, we need housing, we need housing. Almost without exception, everyone said that. So it seems to me that the way to do that is to build, is to build housing, is to use our tools and resources to make all the housing that's necessary. Mr. DeLion noted that we needed 41,000 units of housing. I want to talk to you about my experiences and my frustrations in my district. Because I think the challenge that confronts us is, you know, we hear constantly that this is, you know, one of the richest cities, the most important cities, you know, one of the cities of the world. What we're lacking, though, is a leadership and an ethic and a spirit and a commitment to address this concern. And too frequently, we easily opt out with a legal response or bureaucratic response, and we are not raising to the level of our rhetoric, of our emotion, our commitment to build housing. So let me walk you real quick. I've got 124 units for our eminent domain. It's taken us over two years. We're working on this. I'm going to need your support today. I'm going to need your vote on a proposal to use COVID relief money to make this purchase. It is challenging because I know that the CA probably doesn't think this is the way to go. Before we go forward with these other proposals, the conversation is not premature, but to take an action, Madam Chair, and you were wise in your decision for us not to take an action today. It's wise on your part for us not to take an action because we need to have more housing before we can begin this process. We need to make sure that the people who are engaged in moving people off the sidewalks are not LAPD. We've been unfair in burdening them with too many assignments that are beyond their course and scope of their duties. So let me call upon all those who participated in this conversation today to focus their attention, their energy, on building and doing all that we can to make sure that we build. Let's not let bureaucratic responses, rhetorical responses interfere with our ability to do what we can.
I'm one who's typically frustrated when we have to have discussions with no action, but this issue is one of the tough ones that requires extended discussion. And so I thank you for facilitating it and thank you for the members who've spoken. I want to add to this conversation a few things that I have not heard yet or a few perspectives that have come to mind. One is that it's very difficult to have this discussion when a item that is about enforcement is talked about as if, as if it's a way to deal with homelessness. The advocates do it, I think we've done it. This motion is not about homelessness. It doesn't do anything to improve homelessness. It doesn't propose to. It says it's about clearing the streets, which is our responsibility. It's something that we have to do. But by talking about homelessness, what we do is, I think we avoid the details of what it means to keep our streets clean. I, for one, I will own, and, you know, I might get more protesters for saying this, I don't believe there has to be a unit of housing for every single human being before we say to somebody, you can't have an unlimited amount of stuff on the sidewalk blocking it for everybody to pass. I just, I don't buy it. That doesn't seem like a reality, especially given the situation. If you drive around my district in South L.A., you see vacated apartments, you see apartments full of furniture and clothing on the curb all the time, even though we're not even supposed to be having evictions right now. You see that because people are simply vacating apartments because they can't afford it now and they don't know when they're going to be able to afford it. So as long as you have this moving target, the idea that you're going to ever come up with enough units to house everybody is, again, pie in, a little bit of pie in the sky and highly, highly aspirational, even though I agree with the aspiration. So what do we say about our sidewalks? And what's very, very important to me, and I have not heard yet, I know Councilwoman Rodriguez referred to protocols, I'm eager to see those. What happens once we step up and decide that we're going to govern? What happens when either a person who has a place to live or we've given a place to live insists on being on the sidewalk in a way that blocks the sidewalk? What are we going to do? Are we going to send 10 men there with guns and billy clubs? What are we going to do? And again, I'm not saying anybody has proposed any of it, I'm just saying, I want to know clearly what we're going to do and what the expectation could be because we've gotten in trouble about this before. You know, I take a little bit of issue with Mr. Bruce Guino's map, even though I appreciate the sentiment and agree with it. In fact, the entire County of Los Angeles has laws against camping and sleeping in cars and sleeping on the sidewalk. We have one too. We just don't enforce it because we got sued because of the way we were enforcing it, and we decided to settle that suit. So in fact, everybody in L.A. County has it. We just got in trouble because of the way we carried it out. So I think to shine some light on this discussion, I would love to hear more about how we will carry out enforcement, under what terms we're going to carry out enforcement. Mr. Blumenfeld raised a case, we gave housing to somebody and they decide they want to spend the weekends under the, under the bridge. Yeah, so how do we deal with that? Does an officer who doesn't know who they are or what their story is come and deal with it? Does an outreach worker deal with it? Does an intervention worker deal with it? Let's nail that down so we know how we're going to deal with it. I think it can be done in a just way, I think it can be done in a humane way, and I think it can be done in a way that provides an improved quality of life for the people who do have to sleep on the streets for, for whatever reason. It can create, again, rules of the road. You have homeless people who have to move from one sidewalk to another because of the behavior of some of the people that are on the streets. And we say, oh, you're all homeless, so we're not going to do anything about any of it at any time. I will note, there is a homicide. One homeless person on another homeless person in the South Bureau just this weekend. Predictably, a fight over space. So we abdicate our responsibility when we say, you know, how many ever years it takes us to build a unit of housing for every person on the street, we're just going to let the sidewalks go. I think we got to get down and do the hard work. And again, I believe it's tough. It is not as simple as what I see other cities in the county doing, sending an armed person to go scare the person into moving. Like, that, that's not an acceptable solution. We got to do something that says, these are the people's sidewalks, they belong to all of us, all of us should be able to pass. How do we move you from the place where you're not honoring that to the place where you are? And so the quicker we can have that discussion, I think the better off and closer we'll be to actually taking action on, on securing our sidewalks, which, again, is our responsibility just as much as housing homeless people is our responsibility.
I think as a body, we need to make something abundantly clear, and I hope we can do it unanimously. The CAO should not be in the position of vetoing projects, period. The CAO shouldn't, general manager shouldn't, a council member in the middle of this crisis should not have to be fighting city agencies to get something done. If the CAO or a general manager wants to lodge concerns and explain why it might not be a good idea, that's great, but no council member, whether it's me or Mr. Carruthers or Mr. Sudio, should be roadblocked from trying to do something in response to this humanitarian crisis or in response to Judge Carter by someone who is not elected. And I think it's very important that this body make that clear because it's outrageous for an elected official to want to try to help solve this problem and for the bureaucracy to get in the way of that.
We have, in Los Angeles, 7.23%, 7.23% of the entire homeless population in the United States resides in Los Angeles. Now, L.A. City, our population of 4 million, is 1.22% of the U.S. population. If we had a homeless population commensurate with the population that we have as a city, we would have about 6,000 people experiencing homelessness in Los Angeles. That just isn't our reality. It's going to take a lot of work, but we absolutely have to doggedly and determinedly approach this, no matter what obstacles come our way. So I just wanted to put some things into context as a bookend to this conversation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld.
I'll be quick. I really just wanted to give a chance for our city attorney to speak. And also, I appreciate what everybody's been saying, especially Mr. Harris Dawson, noting that this is not, this is not about our solution to homelessness. We need, all these things we've talked about are our solution to homelessness when it comes to building housing. This is really a much more discreet issue. But I wanted to open it up to the city attorney who's been patiently listening to us and open it up with a question by asking, how can we regulate or prohibit limited areas in a way that is both legal and in a way that does not criminalize people? Is that doable, in your opinion, and how would it be done?
Thank you. Can you hear me, council members?
Yes, Valerie, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Certainly, at least under the Martin versus Boise opinion out of the Ninth Circuit, the city council may try to prevent camping in discreet areas of the city. And I believe that the motion that we were asked to draft and did draft did that in terms of allowing a process for the council to, by resolution, designate certain areas in the city near freeways and near new homeless facilities as areas where no dwelling would be permitted. It's up to the council, and we've provided, the city attorney himself has provided the city council with a variety of policy options about how to do that, including whether to criminalize it. As you note in our ordinance, we did allow for diversion programs because, again, no one wants to criminalize homelessness, and we want to work together to try to get people the treatment and services and housing they need. But as many of you have noted, sometimes you do need some enforcement mechanism, even if it's not criminal, to do that. And so having an ordinance that allows for diversion is one way we've suggested that you may head in terms of your policy options to achieve that goal. You can also add in warnings to the ordinance. In addition to the posted signs in areas where you don't want encampments, you could require the, people be given an oral warning and a chance to relocate. So there are many different policy options to ensure that the services and outreach takes priority and that enforcement is a last option, not a first option. and that enforcement is a last option, not a first option.
Is there anything else you wanted to add on this subject?
No, we're here to answer any questions you have, and we look forward to, you know, continued discussion of this. We, we do believe that, you know, we need to fix our current ordinances. So we appreciate the speed with which you can look at this and make the policy calls that we know are difficult. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. Members, are there any other comments you would like to make or any questions for our city attorney before we move on? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for participating. There's been a lot of questions in terms of how this all got scheduled, both two weeks ago and today. And members, if you recall, when I became your council president, I made it very clear that having discussions and debate in public was something that I was very much in favor of and something that you were all asking for as well. So whenever we have that opportunity, we should take advantage of it. But I will tell you this. Some of you know that I do not beat around the bush, and some of you know that I take very clear positions on what I'm passionate about. And we've got to ensure that these discussions are not just for the sake of hearing ourselves speak, but that we're very clear that the moment will come where we're going to have to make a decision. Take an up or down vote, that is our job. It is very difficult to hear some of the rhetoric out there, some of the misinformation. And I understand that some of you have come under a lot of attack. You've been personally threatened, along with your family, and I completely sympathize with that. We are living through very uncertain times, but at the same time, we have an obligation to make decisions. That's what we were elected to do. And so in moving forward with this item, I would like to send it back to Homeless and Poverty for further discussion. And I do expect this item to return to council in the near future, along with other pending motions in Homeless and Poverty Committee that also need our attention and for us to take, make a decision on moving forward with all of these ordinances that are very controversial, that will not stop every single issue related to homelessness, but we have to continue moving on a path forward. For the past seven years, I've seen pondering, I've seen people talk on either side about some of these complicated issues. And all we are doing is kicking the can down the road, and that has got to stop. We have an opportunity through negotiating with Judge Carter and the county on determining how many beds we're going to dedicate toward this effort, what that means in terms of the dollar figure for the county to pay for services, which we're very dedicated to making sure that happens. Along the way, we have to talk about outreach, which I've had concerns with. And along the way, we have to talk about some sort of enforcement piece to make sure that we can clear our sidewalks and keep them clear. All these decisions are going to be difficult, but all these decisions are coming in the near future. So I just want to make sure people understand that, because I'm damned if I do and I'm damned if I don't when it comes to opening up for discussions in council. So there's no win here. And I understand the criticism is fierce, and it's demoralizing at times, but we have to be very clear as to what our jobs are here today, and that is to make decisions and sometimes to make really tough calls. And so with that, members, I'd like to send this to Homeless and Poverty for further discussion with an expectation of a time soon for this item to come back to this body for a vote. So without objection, that will be the order. Ms. Rodriguez?